Let's see. You're going to do that in the indication.
Okay, go ahead.
Ready?
Yeah, go ahead.
Dear Heavenly Father, we want to thank you today. Thank you for your many blessings. We want to remember Commissioner Joe Gurley's family, Representative John Bell's family. They've had two loved ones to pass away at the same time. And we pray that everyone keeps those families in your prayers. Very trying times to lose two family members at the same time. Just keep them, those families in you, in your prayers. Also, we want you to please guide and direct us as county commissioners to provide services for the citizens of Wayne County. We, the seven of us, we have difficult decisions to make sometimes. We have differences of opinion sometimes. But the bottom line is, the only thing that we can provide to the citizens of Wayne County is service. And we ask in your guidance in the decisions that we make as commissioners. Also be with our leaders in Raleigh. Sometimes they have a difficult time agreeing on issues. And we just ask that they look to our Lord and Savior for advice in making decisions. And also our leaders in Washington. It appears sometimes that they're trying to represent us for the wrong reasons. They need to look to our Heavenly Father for guidance in decisions they make for all of the citizens of the United States. Also, we want to remember friends and other loved ones that went through difficult times. We want to remember our men and women in uniform of all the branches of service. And especially our military personnel stationed here at Goldsboro. Part of those errmen are in harm's way at all times. We ask that you be with them and their families. We ask that you be with our first responders who did an outstanding job in the storm that we just had. Lots of times they risked their lives to save ours. And a lot of us don't even realize what they're going through. But they sacrificed so much for us to have the safety that we have here. And our law enforcement, same thing. They risked so much to protect us. Just be with us today as we conduct our business today. And we ask this in your name, amen.
Let's stand face the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Has anybody had an opportunity to review the minutes? Are there any corrections?
Some.
Question out there? Okay. Any other discussions? If all is in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Just another agenda, Mr. Hennicutt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We would like to add one thing to the consent agenda. Would be item 10, which would be the discussion approval of the fuel bid at the jet port.
Okay, and we're at that as number 10 on the consent agenda.
Yes, sir. And we did go over that in detail during our agenda meeting.
All right, is there any other adjustments to the agenda? Is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented? No motion on the floor, is there any discussion? If all is in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Let's have an update on the hurricane.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. We have a lot of staff members here as well. And I'm going to have them come and make a presentation as well. Just some of the little things that we have done that I don't think the general public really understands what they did during this hurricane that really was in our citizens' best interest, but also saved the taxpayers' money as well. So, but I'll go over some quick facts, right quick. Oh, I'm sorry. Carol has a video. And Public Affairs did an incredible job on this. And we wanted to play that first. Thank you.
That's where it goes. Let's take a look at the track right now. And we'll see that it's been making more or less a beeline toward the southeast coast of the United States.
Even though we will likely not take a direct hit here, we will get brushed by Floyd. And we're expecting at least hurricane-force wind gusts. And so for the overnight-
Closer to Fayetteville, Clinton, and Goldsboro, close to eight inches, eight and a half inches there. Johnston County-
We are no stranger to natural disasters. We get kicked down, but we get back up again. Many have lost homes, memories, and livelihoods. The road to recovery doesn't take days. It's weeks, months, and years of hard work. We come together with one mission to help each other. We are Wayne County Strong. This is home.
Every bit of that applause is well-deserved. And it goes to Joel, Trent, and Bria. I could not be more fortunate than to work with those three incredible people. So, thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Did want to just mention some quick facts. During Matthew, the Neuse River crested at 29.74 feet on October 12th, 2016. And in Florence, we crested at 27.6 feet on 9/19, which was last Wednesday. Currently, the Neuse is 11.18 feet. And it's forecast to be 13.3 feet by Saturday, October 6, well below the current flood stage of 18 feet with release of water from the falls of the Neuse Dam by the Corps of Engineers. Just an FYI, the county opened our EOC with a soft opening on Wednesday, September 12. And we deactivated the EOC on Friday, September 25. Public safety, we had over 25 swift water rescues that were documented by either OES or our fire departments. Shelters, we started with four shelters that were open at 10:00 a.m. on Thursday, September 13. However, due to the number of people that we had show up at our shelters, we immediately opened two additional shelters that afternoon at Spring Creek Middle and Mount Olive Middle. All shelters were closed on Thursday, September 20. And individuals who were still displaced were placed in a local hotel. We had almost 1,000 people that were in our shelters, 999. And compared to Matthew, at the height, it was below 500. So, people still had the thoughts of Matthew in their minds. And they took the right precautionary to get into shelters. At Mount Olive Middle and Carver, we had 269. Spring Creek High and Spring Creek Middle, 224. Tommy's Road, 225. And at Wayne Academy, we had 281. As Carol said, our Public Affairs did an outstanding job. During the event, our Public Affairs Department issued over 48 press releases during this time. They also issued updates to the Board of Commissioners. And we hope you saw that. We tried to do that three times a day. That the EOC was open. We wanted to make sure you knew exactly what was going on. This did not include the numerous posts that we put Facebook to Instagram. Also, we did a lot of Facebook Live. Joel did, and Carol did. It was an absolute, you know, media blitz. And I think we did an incredible job on that. We also translated many of our press releases to Spanish and to French Creole. So, that was a request from Commissioner Carmody. We had a lot of donations that came to the county. As you're aware, we opened up the Maxwell, the Farm Bureau building, the farmer's market at the Maxwell Center, and also at the training depot at Mount Olive. These were distributed, we had two days, Friday, September 21st, and Tuesday, September 25th. During these two days, we distributed supplies to 958 households, which represented 3,561 individuals. One of the things that I think worked out very well for us this year is we opened up the Maxwell Center to Duke Lyman. At the height of that, we had over 200 people that were camped out in the Maxwell Center. Duke brought in showers. They brought in mobile kitchens. And they were there for about a week. And the nice thing about that is, I think we got our power on a lot quicker by having those centrally located here in Wayne County. So, that was a good benefit for us. There's a lot of different things that we did. And Tammy Shrinker is here. One of the big things that we have done is dealing with food stamps, replacement food stamps, disaster food stamps, shelters. And I just wanted Tammy to come up and kind of give you a quick update of really the incredible work that has been nonstop weekends for her staff for the last three weeks. So, if I want to introduce Tammy.
Thank you, good morning.
Good morning.
Of course, and you know that this was our first time doing shelters by ourselves. So, it was Department of Social Services who actually ran those shelters and staffed those shelters. We had so much help. I can't say enough thank yous to the sheriff for providing support. Kendall Lee and his team. I don't know what we've done without them. So many others that helped. But we were able to, as we had populations start to leave, we were able to consolidate some of our shelters. And at the end, we had Tommy's Road open. We had social workers in the last two days of those shelters. They were evaluating every resident we had. And if we found that residents were truly displaced from the flood, we did place them. So, at the end of closing those shelters, we had 21 individuals we did place in a hotel till we could find a more permanent place for them. Also, of course, DSS is in charge of the distribution center. And Mr. Hennicutt gave you the numbers. We partnered with the Bridge Church. And they provided an incredible amount of volunteers to help with that on our distribution days. The county, all the county departments provided so much help for us to be able to accomplish that. It was, it was a phenomenal setup. Actually, people actually drove through. And we loaded their cars with the needed supplies that they had. So, on the day that we opened our office, we had a tremendous amount of people in line for replacement food and nutrition benefits. And so, if you rode by our building and saw those lines there, those were individuals who had lost food and had come in to get those replacements. As of close of business yesterday, we had seen 5,591 people just for replacement benefits. Of course, we're still actively issuing disaster FNS benefits. Those are for people who don't receive regular food and nutrition benefits. The income level goes much higher. We actually look at one month. And they're able to take any expenses from the storm out of that one month's income. We have to run that program for eight days. So, we started Friday. We went Saturday. And we started again yesterday. And we'll go through Saturday. And so, in three days, at the close of business yesterday, we'd seen 4,577 residents in three days. Just to give you an example, in Matthew, we did that for five days. Our total in Matthew was 4,945. So, we're very close to that at three days. We don't choose how long to be open. We're told the days that we have to be open and accept applications for this program. So, the state has said that we will go eight days and gave us the days that we will actually open. So, we will close that on Saturday. We're doing that at the Busman Building. It's been a very good place for us to do that. We are actually able to get everybody who's waiting in line when we open the doors within 30 minutes in that building. So, they're not standing outside. So, that's where we're at. So, does anyone have any questions?
Questions? Comments?
I just want to give you a great big thank you. I was in and out several times during the disaster. And everything run like a well-oil machine. It was, everyone did a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Thank you specifically for the report that you've just given. But I probably need to back, back and give our county manager a very thank you. I was, I was in Goldsboro for a meeting, one of my regular committee meetings. But I came out of the elevator and Mr. Acop and I believe Mr. Chilton were on their way to a directors meeting related to the storm. And the only thing that I could say to the citizens of Wayne County is, you've got to be proud of the organization. And I was impressed. I'm just purely impressed by all of the department heads being in place, giving their reports, and stepping back away from being a county commissioner, just being a citizen. It made you feel a little bit safer, Mr. Hennicutt. When you heard that everybody was in place, there was like a great coordination of what each, each person there seemed to know what the next group was going to do. And then that just made you feel better knowing there was a massive storm all the way. And so, I just, a great shout out to you for your excellent activity. But just, Mr. Hennicutt, just the whole group. You kept us informed. I, I could go on my little smartphone and see what was happening, so.
And I, and I promise you, I'm not leaving out our OES department and the great work that they've done. What I wanted just to do today, there are just a couple of groups that sometimes you may not hear about fully. And this is the reason why I've asked Tammy and also I've asked Kendall. And we're going to give an after-action report back to the board once we sit down and look at things that went well and didn't go well. We will give that back to the board. But our OES department did, and our, all of emergency services and the sheriff's department did an absolute fabulous job on this. These, what I wanted to do today, just sometimes you don't think about the sheer numbers of food stamps. You know, that food stamps is a huge issue. Or that the shelters, you know, how many people? We basically doubled Matthew. And that we had to open two emergency shelters that evening because we were overflowing. So, you know, this is just a snapshot. But again, this was a, really a team effort all across the board from everybody.
Great job.
I, unfortunately, I wasn't in Wayne County because I had, I was at the coast. I've got major damage. But all of that can be replaced. But I can tell you, my heart was here. And I want to speak, I know everyone here, including OES and everybody, but being on the DSS Board along with Commissioner Carmody, I want to, I want to give a thank you to Tammy. She did keep me informed almost on a daily basis. I hadn't been in the county for almost two weeks until this past Saturday. So, but I understand that the coordination and so forth between all departments in this county was just unbelievable. But Tammy brought up something that I, when we were talking yesterday or the day before, sometimes you're right. You're right, Craig. Sometimes a department like DSS, our work is not over. While, while other departments may be catching up and sort of winding down, DSS is continuing full-blown, you know? And so, the staff on behalf of the DSS Board, I want to say as chairman publicly that for DSS, I'm not excluding anybody else in this county. I'm talking about DSS, is that we all just thank you, your staff, and all the employees of what has taken place. And having said that, during Matthew, I think this time, the county as a whole, I think we can all agree that everything this time was much more coordinated. I think we were more self-sufficient. We were more doing things on our own. Because we know what we're going to do. And it worked out, didn't it?
Well, and also, one of the reasons, this is the fourth weekend in a row that DSS has had to work. I think you were off Sunday.
We took Sunday off.
They took Sunday off.
We'll work this Sunday. So, we can key all those applications we've taken.
That's right. But four weekends in a row, you know, really for a full month, they have worked straight. And I just wanted to make sure that sometimes they don't get the recognition that they deserve. But they do really provide that valuable service to our citizens.
And I do, I left one thing out. Alamance County has agreed to take some of our applications and help us key. So, they've partnered with us. And so, we've just been really fortunate with Susan Osborne and her team there. So, we have sent them about 500 of those 4,500 applications to key for us. And they've agreed to help us continue to key.
That's great. Thank you.
I was at the EOC a couple of times myself. And Tammy was there working hard. She doesn't just give direction. She, she was on the ground working. And so, was the sheriff and everybody else, all these guys back here. You lead by example, and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person I want to call, I want to call Kendall Lee. And there's kind of a story about our jail that I don't think many people understand that we almost, during that Saturday night, we almost had to send people to Guilford County. Because we had issues with backup and I and I into our jail that we could have had overflow of the sewer within our jail. And if that would have happened, we would have had to move over 200 in the old jail to Guilford County along with staff, along with everybody else. However, Kendall has a new name. Chip came up with this. It's like, well, something's going on. We'll call Kendall. So, call Kendall. And his staff came up and had a solution. But I'll let Kendall explain.
Oh, yeah. We definitely did. We, we had stuff coming up in the jail. We'll just leave it at that, stuff. We, with that amount of rain, obviously, the city sewer system backed up really quickly. And our jail, our kitchen and stuff in the jail was in the lower level, which is basically a basement. And when it backs up like that, stuff starts coming up through the floor drains. And we had a mess. I mean, once you lose the kitchen, you've lost the jail. And we realized really quickly there was nothing we could do about it. Met with our Major Thaxton out there. And he started immediately making plans on what he was going to do to move his people. I mean, he was going to have to evacuate the jail. And John Cash had brought his septic tank truck, which y'all bought us. And it was at the COB because his place down there, Genoa Flood. So, I got thinking, I'm like, wait a minute. We got a truck that can handle stuff. And that's what it's for. So, John Cash brought that up there. And these guys, you see behind me, they're just a small representation of who we had here working during the storm. But we brought this particular group because once we brought his truck, we snatched the floor drain out, threw a hose in it, and started keeping stuff taken care of. So, but these guys here, once we did that, they started doing it 24, well, not 24/7, but around the clock for 82 hours. That truck never cut off. We pumped it, kept it down, kept it clean, and saved untold amounts of money. That'd be up to the sheriff and Major Thaxton to tell you how much money they saved by not moving people. But had we'd have paid somebody to use their truck for 82 hours, that was like $19,000 hourly rate by using their truck. So, once again, a piece of equipment y'all allowed us to buy, very beneficial to the county. It's been beneficial. There's no telling how many, much money it saved us at the schools, you know, keeping that down. But like I said, these guys took it and ran with it. They, they made shifts for themselves. I didn't even tell them how to do it. They just made shifts for themselves. And they kept that truck manned the whole time. So, it did. It saved us a lot of trouble, a lot of cleaning up, a lot of moving people. I can't even imagine, Sheriff from J, I can't imagine how much money it would have cost to move 200-plus people to another county. And that was, and once again, that was a major cost savings that these guys helped you do. But that was a small portion of what these guys did on a regular basis. I'm going to sit here and tell you, they don't do anything for a living. They don't do much. But that is actually not factual at all. I pick on them every day and tell them they do nothing. But they don't. They work really, really hard for us. I mean, we're at, we're 10, 11, 12, 1, 2 o'clock in the morning during the hurricane delivering cops to the shelters because that's when we got them. They, we finally got them about 9 or 10 o'clock. And it was rough. But these guys were unloading cops in that. They did. I mean, no matter what, we got a call to do. We tried to get to it. Tammy, Lord have mercy, Tammy, she knows my phone number well. But she, I know, she, she did a fantastic job staying on top of how she stayed on top of what she did. But these guys did it. I didn't do a thing. I called, when Tammy called and said, get it done, I called. So, I got a lot of calls back there, too. They did it. And there's a few more guys that are not here. I brought these guys just representative of who kept the jail pumped down. But they did a lot of work, a lot of hard work. I think they've got anywhere average from 80 to 100 overtime hours just during that weekend. That's just from the time it started blowing till it quit raining. I could go on and on and on, what we did and the different things we did. But long and short of it is, that's who did it, right there. They did it. I didn't do a thing. I just answered the phone. I think they all wanted to make individual speeches, I believe. They said that won't happen.
But again, these are just small things right now. There's numerous stories like this throughout the county that occurred during the Florence event. But I do want to thank Kendall and Tammy and our entire OES staff and public safety and Chip and you name it. We were here and we were looking after the citizens of Wayne County. And I'm very proud of the team. As Carol said, we sent out press releases left and right. Our PIO staff was here 24/7. Carol was, it was just, really, you didn't have to say, well, are you coming in or not coming in? They were here. And you would be very proud, and you should be very proud of the work that your staff has done. So, we will give more updates later on. But this was just the two I wanted to hit first. And but we're going to do an after-action report. And we'll fill you in. And but again, just want to thank everybody that was a part of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff, I think you're next. And you got any words of wisdom as well?
Well, I would like to thank everyone that supported our group. Our deputies were also out during the storm. And we had a lot of support from all divisions in this, in this county, as well as citizens in the county. So, I hate to say it, but I think-
So, I hate to say it, but I think we're getting good at this thing, so I hate to keep practicing, but we did get a little better this time than we were last time, but we were prepared, and thank you for the support that y'all gave us. And you've heard of Ghostbusters, we'll call them Stuffbusters now. They did a great job for us, as well as DSS, and we thank them. Ask Lieutenant Ron Baker to come forward, please. And Lieutenant Baker has family here today supporting him in his retirement today. We thank y'all for being here a whole lot. Again, I come before you somewhat sad for the.
Sheriff. Let us come down.
Okay. Yes, sir. As I was saying, I'm a little bit sad today again because I'm losing one of my very top investigators. Lieutenant Baker, if I had a sensitive investigation, he was either leading it or right in the middle of it, and he always conducted himself in a very professional manner, and I could always depend on him being there. And so, at this time, Lieutenant, I'd like to present you with this plaque to Ron Baker, Sheriff's Office, in appreciation of dedicated service as a county employee, February 1993 to August 2018. Thank you, sir. Lieutenant, this is a resolution presented to you from the County of Wayne. The county commissioners have adopted this resolution in order for me to present you with your service weapon, so I'll give that to you. And this is your service weapon that you carry in protection of the citizens of Wayne County. This is Lieutenant Ron Baker for meritorious service, dedication, loyalty, friendship, and professionalism that you have demonstrated during your career. Your presence will be missed, but your accomplishments will not be forgotten. Thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
Sheriff, go on. Come on up here. Come on in.
I said, "Any word?" Sheriff. Get back to my remote. Long as you're not running against the sheriff.
No. Good morning, everyone. Just like to thank everyone for being here today. It's been a journey, a long journey. But without God, my family, and my friends, that journey would have been a little bit longer and maybe shorter. I came to this thing unscathed, and I'm hoping everyone else can continue to have a career in law enforcement to be safe. I'll be all back to college protecting those, our children. My jurisdiction was shrunk from Wayne County to the college. But just like to say, thank you very much for all you have done for me. I know everybody in this room, and one day you'll be where I am, and I'd like to thank Mr. Park for everything that you've done through my career. And I just hope everybody the best and God bless them. And thank our commissioners also, they're doing an excellent and wonderful job. I've never heard anything to say otherwise. Put me on the plaque, right? And I've been here three sheriffs, and each and every one of them have treated me with respect, and I've treated them with respect in turn, and I'm going to go ahead and stop now. But thank y'all so very much. Thank you.
I need a motion. I need a motion to the resolution.
I was thinking.
Sir, can you get the employees back in for just a minute?
Yes, sir.
Get them back in your place.
Mr. Chairman, if I might.
Yes.
Could I make a motion that we approve the resolution to award the service weapon to retired Detective Lieutenant Ron Baker?
As motion on the floor, any discussion? We forgot to do it earlier. All those, please raise your right hand.
Now he's legal to have that weapon.
Okay. We're running behind a little bit, but that's okay. That was worthwhile.
Get them back. Get them back. He's going to check out the third body outside.
Oh. We'll give them a couple minutes to get back. I know, I know about it. We're going to go ahead and open up public comments, so anyone who wants to speak, give us your name, your address, and your phone number, and it is. Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning. I'm Doran Flowers, Mayor of Fremont. My phone number is 242-5484. That's the 919 number. First, let me say how much we appreciate the support we as a town get from you commissioners and your staff. You may not give us everything we want, but we know we have a sympathetic ear, and many times, a sympathetic ear is about as much as you can hope for. And we do appreciate all you try to do for us in Fremont. With that, I have a couple of other issues. We understand that the state is going to allocate a million dollars to the counties for cleanup. We hope, if that is a fact, that once you receive your portion of that million dollars, you remember the municipalities. We have unexpected costs as well, and we would appreciate anything that you all can do to help support us in meeting our hurricane needs. The third thing deals with Fremont stars and the school. A brief background, as we understand it, your board, the commissioners, and the Board of Education got together, agreed on priorities for schools, Fremont being one of them, and you as Board of Commissioners allocated a commitment of funds for those priorities that were established. We have met with the Board of Education staff roughly six to eight months ago, and really have heard very little from it since then, other than rumors. And I'm here to ask what our status is in terms of those classrooms. What can we tell our residents when they can expect some construction going on? Normally, if you get approval of both boards and the money is found, you can see some evidence of movement, and we've seen that. The third thing is that when BB and T closed, they gave the building to the town. Hopefully, we're going to finalize the renovations, the minor renovations that were required, and we're going to move our town hall to BB and T building. We're going to have an open house. I want to publicly invite all of you now, don't know when, don't know how, don't know where, other than to say it's going to be around that BB and T building. And it will be shortly. We feel like we can, within a month, a month and a half, we will be in that building, and we certainly want you to participate. We, again, we appreciate everything you all do for us, but we would like to know what the status is of the school. We all got excited over it, and it's disappeared in terms of conversation. And if we need to go elsewhere, just let us go elsewhere. I had scheduled a meeting with a committee, with a board, and it happened to be the day that the hurricane came through, and I stayed home. I don't know if they met or not, but they did meet with me, I know that. But we do know it's a joint endeavor, but we know that you have to start the first strings. And if you have approved the money for that classroom, or those classrooms, we would like to know when they're going to start construction up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Anyone else? Ms. Redcock, I think you wanted to speak.
Yes, sir. I'll try to get through this. As many of y'all know, I lost a granddaughter about five weeks ago. She was on the list for lung transplant, and she, she did not live long enough to receive those lungs. But there was a fundraiser started to help with some of her hospital expense, and unfortunately, like I say, she did not live long enough to have her lung transplant. But if you look out over the audience today, you see a lot of blue shirts. The staff of Wayne County, and this is not only the blue shirts being worn today, but the employees of Wayne County has been so good to me and my family in support of Emily. Just because Emily's no longer with us, that need to, we need to, doesn't mean that we don't still need to carry on this fight. There's other kids, other people that needs donors to further their life. And I just encourage everyone that's able to be an organ donor. We never know when our last breath is going to be, and if in some small way we can extend someone else's life, it would certainly be appreciated. It's what Emily would want. With Emily's disease, she was not able to be an organ donor, except for the corneas in her eyes. We pray that there's two people somewhere today that can see now because of my Emily. So, please, if you're not an organ donor, please make arrangements, because there's someone out there that we all can help when we're no longer in the position to help ourselves. And again, all the staff that's wearing these blue shirts today, you just do not know what this means to me and my family. Like I say, there's other county employees wearing them today, too. But the fight still has to go on for organ transplants to prolong other children and other people. It's not only, Emily was on the list for lung transplant, but it's not only lungs, it's lungs, it's kidneys, it's hearts, it's just so much that you can do to give someone else life. And again, staff, y'all are special people. There's a lot of special people in Wayne County. The outpouring of love for our family has been, there's no word that I can explain, that I can use. But again, thank y'all for the blue shirts today, and for all that y'all have done for Just thank you. Now you can go back to work.
Does anyone else that care to speak? All right, well, I'm going to close public comments. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Could we ask for Mayor Flowers, or somebody to get back to him as to his question about the classrooms, Craig?
I was going to suggest that Craig do that.
We will. I don't think there's a clear answer at this time, but we will get back with Mayor Flowers when we have that clear answer. Yes, sir.
I did have one comment.
Yes, sir, I did. I'm sorry, Mayor.
Okay. All right.
I sneaked behind your back.
I did have one comment, Mayor. When you find out, be sure to let us know.
Well, if I can raise anyone, we'll let you know.
Thank you.
We plan to ask until we get an answer.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. Champion to the point committee, and your backup, Mr. Redcock?
Yes, sir. We do have some appointments this morning. We have appointments, we have eight people to appoint to the Latino Council. And Madam Clerk, if you would, call out their names, because I am not real good in Spanish.
Yes, sir, I'll be glad to. The eight names are, which he's, this is not Spanish, Sheriff Larry Pierce.
I could have done that.
You could have done that one. Jonathan Shavis, Hady Cotto, Wanda Nieves, Bianca Wall, Sarah Lynn Vied, Pat Yates, and Janelle Nava.
And we put that in form of a motion. All right, we have a motion on the floors. Any discussion? All right, I was the favorite place to raise your right hand. Thank you, Ms. Redcock.
That's the only information we have for today, sir.
All right, now that finished business, talk about your schedule of convenience.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, as you're aware, we've been discussing the possibility of opening our convenience centers on Wednesdays. Right now, they have been opened due to the storm to give people that opportunity, but before on a regular schedule, they were closed all day on Wednesdays. One of the issues that we also had, if you remember, we adjusted the schedule at the landfill. The landfill at one time was closed on Wednesdays, we are now open on Wednesdays, and I think that that has worked out very, very well. One other thing about the convenience centers is we're doing it with part-time. We currently have 13 convenience center sites, and one of the issues about adding hours was if you add hours, are you going to put those people into full-time status? And we didn't want to do that. The cost savings, there were not cost savings, there were a lot of additional costs that would have been associated with that. In order to make sure we have some time that we are open up on Wednesdays, we would like to recommend that we adjust our current schedule. Right now, we are open, excuse me, 7:30 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. We are closed on Sundays. But now, we would like to recommend a new schedule that we're open from 7:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. on Wednesdays. And this would kind of balance it out. We have had our landfill staff look at when the most usage was. We get a lot of, you know, a lot of usage early in the morning before people get to work, so that's the reason why we're adjusting schedules that way. So, I know that there's a concern from some commissioners that is this enough time or not, but we would just like to evaluate, to see if this works, to see the comments we get back before we recommend looking at a full day on Wednesdays. But this is a really good start. One other thing about the convenience centers is we're doing it with part-time. We currently have 13 convenience center sites. And one of the issues about adding hours was if you add hours, are you going to put those people into full-time status? And we didn't want to do that. The cost savings, there were not cost savings, there were a lot of additional costs that would have been associated with that. In order to make sure we have some time that we are open up on Wednesdays, we would like to recommend that we adjust our current schedule. Right now, we are open, excuse me, 7:30 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. We are closed on Sundays. But now, we would like to recommend a new schedule that we're open from 7:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. on Wednesdays. And this would kind of balance it out. We have had our landfill staff look at when the most usage was. We get a lot of, you know, a lot of usage early in the morning before people get out of work. So that's the reason why we're adjusting schedules that way. So I know that there's a concern from some commissioners that is this enough time or not? But we would just like to evaluate, to see if this works, to see the comments we get back before we recommend looking at a full day on Wednesdays. But this is a really good start. The other thing we would like to recommend is since we're adding a day to 13 sites, is that we have two additional part-time positions that basically will be pools that can work where necessary within the 13 convenience centers. So we would like to recommend that and have the board approve that, please.
Is there a motion to approve? I got a motion from somewhere. Is any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I just had a, where did this, where did this recommendation come from? Was it the citizens asked for this, or is it something that we did?
I've heard feedback from board members, I've heard feedback in working with Tim Rogers, you know, that this was something that needed to be done.
Well, one of the concerns, and I just had to think about it, is that now we're open to 7:00. I'm wondering if going to 6:00 possibly would be a hindrance to some of our contractors that are, that are working in the county, like rebuilding from the hurricane and so forth. They work late. I know down at the coast, they're working at 7, 8 o'clock at night. So I'm just wondering if we might want to consider not changing this 7:00 time back to 6:00 until after the hurricane cleanup is over.
Well, we're open the landfill. You know, the landfill's still open till 7:00, but most of your C and D would go to the landfill and not the convenience centers.
Okay, so this is just for convenience?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I see it now. Been a long week. Thank you.
You know, the schedule, you know, more to 6:00 on Wednesdays, it's like any schedule, people will have to get used to it. So you don't have to expect some people may find it inconvenient to get there, because it's happened to me before. Once you learn what the schedule is, you should start going smoothly.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Also, I've had some discussion with some of the employees at container sites and citizens that wanted to see it open on Wednesdays. We've got to start somewhere. I mean, this 1 to 6:00, let's see how it works. We can always add on time, but if we put in a lot of time, it's going to be harder to take it away. So let's, I think this will work. Let's use it, try it, see if it works. If it's not broke, we won't fix it. But if it's not working, we can always go back and adjust some hours. But, you know, like I've said in the past, the only thing that us commissioners, the only thing we can offer to citizens of Wayne County is service. And I feel like this is adding to service to give them an extra half a day or so for the convenience centers. And my recommendation, you know, was to you, to, you know, I'm fine with this, you know, we can always adjust it later.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We'll keep you updated if we hear things.
Mr. Honeycutt, and I've asked this question before, and I know part of the answer. You do not control what my law does.
No, sir.
I would also suggest that you might reach out to them to see if they can adjust their hours to sort of match this. And what happens is folk are in the business of, especially during this cleanup time, and thank you one thing for making it available on Wednesdays, which sort of puts it every day. Because then folk don't have to try to remember, they get halfway there and realize the place is closed. So thank you for adjusting our hours. And I think it's more important that it's open every day rather than being open all day. I mean, folk can sort of adjust to how they do it. I know that's how I do what I do, is it's just convenient to have it often. But might just reach out, since you are head of the whole county, that might have an impression upon some of the municipalities of Wayne.
Yes, sir, we will.
Might show them the rationale of adjusting their hours to match yours.
Yes, sir.
Hours. Thanks, sir.
Any other comments? All right, we've got the motion on the floor. Always a favorite, please raise your right hand. Thank you. We discussed the consent agenda at length in the earlier opening session. Are there any additional questions or comments on that?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Always a favorite, please raise your right hand. Moving on, Mr. Gurley was going to read this, was going to read this resolution supporting the farmers, but I'm going to do it instead. But before I do that, I see that our cooperative section director, Kevin Johnson, is sitting in the back. Kevin, could you come out and give us a brief update on the impact of our local farms and the hurricane? I know you ain't planning on doing this, but I know you're a man on the spot, you can do it.
And I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you, Mr. Honeycutt. Yeah, our farmers are definitely struggling right now. Y'all know there's a lot of challenges that farmers are facing commodity-wise, there's a lot of challenges with our integrators, a lot of things. But the hurricane itself really affected our field crop situation. We didn't lose any animals, which is good, because of course, that was a big deal with Floyd and Matthew. But if you've looked at our tobacco crop, it ended that day. It was zeroed out. We had about 40% of our crops still in the field, and it was probably at least 60% of the value. If you know anything about tobacco, the big, the tips is where the money's at. And, you know, by Monday, the entire crop had flopped, turned brown, and was laying on end of the stalk. There was none saved. So we looked at that being right at $17 million loss. Our sweet potato crop is, I think my initial estimates were underestimated now that we're really getting into it. But we know we're probably looking at upwards $3 million loss on sweet potatoes. We did have some soybeans that drowned it, especially along the creeks, the river, where we traditionally plant some soybeans. Most of the corn was out, there was some corn damaged. Cotton, even though it looks good, it's sprouting, the seed are sprouting inside the bowls and in the lint, and that's a quality problem. Right now, our initial estimates were $22 million just in field crops. There was some structural damage, farm paths, we got some roofs blowed off, some barns, some fences. But those numbers will only go up, I can tell you that. But in any case, that's kind of a quick synopsis of where we stand with agriculture.
There was one comment you made at the chamber the other day about when you returned to the stores and all the dairy and all the meat was gone.
That, that's right. I think y'all realized, all our grocery stores, a lot of them lost power, they had to get rid of all their meat, their dairy, all the frozen stuff. And, you know, when, when, when our local citizens went back to the grocery stores, you know, there wasn't any cold products. And, you know, there was a lot of comments being made out there about, you know, people need to wake up, this is what could happen. You know, our farmers are kind of in jeopardy right now, there's, they're treading on thin ice. And so this is kind of a wake-up call. You know, we all have to have farmers. You know, we ate breakfast this morning, we're going to eat lunch, supper. I mean, we have to have farmers, we have to have agriculture. So I'd just like to create an awareness and let people know that. But our farmers are struggling. They've had five bad years commodity-wise. Tobacco, which used to be king here for 100 years, as y'all might know, is not king anymore. And we're seeing some real challenges. We've got some small farmers that are really struggling. And just wanted to let you know that. We hope that there's, you know, the federal government will declare, I mean, they've declared Wayne County a disaster, but normally when they do these things, they, they give emergency loans, but loans aren't going to help them.
Can't pay it back.
Yeah, they can't pay it back, you know. And I don't want to sit up here and, and tell y'all there's the problems that are going on, y'all are aware of them. But in any case, let's, let's do, keep our farmers in your thoughts and prayers.
Thanks for everything you do, Kevin.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Yes, sir.
I answered your question. You referenced the federal government, and you said, you talked about the loans.
Yes.
Now, I've never been a farmer, but I've had farmers and relatives. Now, mine's, when we talk about crop insurance, what percent of that $22 million loss is going to be unwritten by the federal government?
So the federal crop, or crop insurance is subsidized by the federal government. But they've had to utilize that program in the last several years because of bad years. And every time they do that, then their level of coverage for the following year is less. And so if you've utilized federal crop insurance for the last, say, two or three years, then you may not return back but 50%. So I don't know if that answers your question.
Well, that's what I was really, if we just use that $22 million figure that you said would be a loss, can we assume that the farmers, as a broad group, might get 50% of that back through the federal government, not as a loan, but as?
As a crop insurance, which they pay premiums, they pay premiums on that insurance. They will get some of that back. A crop like sweet potatoes is not covered by crop insurance.
So each farmer has to have his own?
He has to have coverage.
He's got to provide his own insurance, he's got to pay an insurance premium.
Yes, yes, yes. So, I mean, you think about that, that's going to be, for, for an insurance company, that's a huge payout. Because if you looked at the state numbers, they're saying it's, what, $1 billion loss? Now, of course, in places like Pender, Bladen, Jones, Duplin, they took some significant livestock losses, and that, that of course, made that number high.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I should also thank Kevin. He answered some really difficult questions while the E S C was open. Kevin didn't have power for about eight days.
It was four days.
It was a long time. But Kevin also opened up the farmers' market to make sure that we had that as a distribution place and worked with the vendors there. And Kevin just really did a fantastic job during the process as well. And I just wanted to publicly thank Kevin and the work that he did during the storm.
And I want to, I want to appreciate it. We did a lot of assessment, that's kind of what we do. But I do want to thank, I think Carol will agree with this, Michelle Estrada on our staff is, is helped out, especially with reaching out into our Latino community and a lot of times translating some, some of our stuff.
Every single post that went on Facebook, and that was in the hundreds, she translated to Spanish for us. We never even had to call her. It was done almost immediately once it was out there. She's amazing.
Yeah, she's fantastic. She's a great resource to Wayne County.
Jesus.
But one last question before you leave. The farm bill, and I don't remember the last time I read about it in the newspaper, but has the nationwide farm bill been passed?
No, sir. No, sir.
I would like, not just I hope for my edification, but whenever it is passed, I would like for you to come back and give us a few minutes of explanation as to who benefits broadly across the United States from the farm bill. I would like for the public to know how it's really broken down.
I, I can do that. It's, that's an interesting thing, and it's extremely political when you get at a federal level.
We realize that. And I ask you with some caution. I ask you, I realize it's a highly political, sensitive subject seems like, but I'd probably like for us to have a, a good explanation.
And as y'all probably know, the farm bill is, it includes the food and nutrition components that a lot of our social services department and stuff helps with. In fact, that's, that's the biggest portion of it. But then it just depends on the politics of, this last farm bill was favored peanuts. So it favored places like Georgia and Texas, and, you know, sometimes the Midwest has good politics. But in any case, it's very political. I will, I can come back. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. All right, I'll read this. Whereas agriculture and agribusiness is a mainstay of the economy of Wayne County, and whereas agriculture and agribusiness is the number one industry in North Carolina, contributing approximately 85 billion to the state economy, and whereas the citizens of Wayne County and North Carolina enjoy a food supply that is abundant, affordable, and among the world's safest, thanks in part to the productivity of our farmers, and whereas our farms are encouraged to use best practices to assist the ecology and to improve efficiency, and whereas our farmers provide the food, fuel, and fiber for our state, country, and the world, and whereas agriculture touches the life of everyone in our daily meals, our clothes, and some fuels, and whereas Wayne County is supportive of our farmers through the Wayne County Agricultural Extension Program, and whereas farming and agriculture in Wayne County support other community businesses and their local economy, and whereas the Wayne County Board of Commissioners believe it is important to support our agricultural industry and our farmers, so and encourage a safe and abundant food and fiber supply. Now therefore, it would be resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners hereby supports the farmers of Wayne County. And I'll put that into the form of a motion and for discussion. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
No, I was just.
Oh, okay, you're good.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make just an observation. Just thinking about how important the farm products are to us as we go to the food line and Peter Wiegand Wilson marching and get what we get. I want to take a moment to, just to talk about personally what I see it means to folk from other countries who come here to work, means for their economy. I personally watch folk who work at Butterball and over in Smithfield, at the Smithfield plant and all that, as they work their shifts and, and come back to their respective homes. And, but more than that, they remind me of the 50s and 60s when a lot of my people went north to New York and places to work and sent resources back to North Carolina to help our family members. So make a long story short, I watch, especially some of the Haitian community, as they are helping out back in their respective homes where they come, whether it be Florida or Haiti, sending food supplies and things like that. And, and so what Butterball and other food processors are providing for the world, they are providing income for folk to do basic things. It just sort of reminds me of the 50s and 60s in America, when I watched people go away to work to send money and resources back to North Carolina, Comer County, South Carolina, places where there were not as good of jobs. And so it's good to see that. It's just, when you see it firsthand, it really means, it means a lot to me when I watch it happen. So shout out to the processes, the food processes. And I know we've done things in recent times to help ensure that, that our plants can expand and handle more activity. A good thing, Mr. Honeycutt, a good thing.
Any other discussion? All right, always a favorite, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Moving on to breast cancer awareness, Mr. Redcock.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, October is designated as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And like everyone to keep in mind, breast cancer does not discriminate. It affects all races, all genders, all ages. So this is, it's a terrible disease, which all cancers are. But just remember, cancer does not discriminate. I mean, it affects everyone. And I would like to read this resolution, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Whereas breast, whereas breast cancer touches every corner of the United States, and hundreds of thousands of Americans will be diagnosed with breast cancer, and tens of thousands would die from, from it. And whereas about one in eight women And whereas about 1 in 8 women born today in the United States will get breast cancer at some point in their lifetime, and approximately 2,000 men are diagnosed with breast cancer each year. And whereas we show our support for every individual, every family struggling with breast cancer, and we pause to remember those we have lost. And whereas Breast Cancer Awareness Month in October is a chance to raise awareness about the importance of early detection of breast cancer by getting a mammogram, encourage our community organizations, churches, families, individuals to get involved. And whereas we salute the women and men who dedicate themselves to prevent detection and treatment as we observe Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim October 2018 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Wayne County and encourage all citizens to join in activities that will increase awareness of what we can do to prevent breast cancer adopted this day, April the 2nd of October 2018. I'd like to put that in the form of a motion, sir.
We have a motion on the floors. Any discussion?
Just one quick thing, Mr. Chairman. I think it's this coming Wednesday, the 11th, I think, is when UNC Health carries having their Breast Cancer Awareness Ceremony. And it will be at the Maxwell Center this year. It's been being at the hospital, but it will be at the Maxwell Center this year. And I encourage everyone to go online and that's involved with this terrible disease to register and be involved with UNC's awareness program. They do an outstanding job. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I was going to mention that, and I'm glad you did.
Yep.
Because cancer doesn't discriminate, like you said. You never know, all of us know someone and they've lost someone dear to us through cancer. So, it's important that we recognize them. Any other discussion? If I was a favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, Mr. Rick Acop. Okay. There he is, Alan. I saw you sneak in earlier. He's going to talk about the schedule of the values by the tax administrator out of him.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. As you know, we do have a reappraisal going on. It's been going on for a while now. It goes to effect 2019. This is part of the process for that. This is basically one of the first processes officially that we do. This was statutory. This was, years ago, this was in our rules and guidelines that we do this. This book has been called your rulebook, your playbook, even has somebody refer to it as a recipe book. It's got all your ingredients in it. It's got how to do things. What it don't have is the main important thing everybody wants to know is, what's my new value? It doesn't have that in here. This is all the backbone. This is how we do our job. This is how we measure a house, how we list a house, all of our base rates for houses, for land. Anything you see in the county that's assessed, it tells us in here the starting point. And that's what this book is for. Years ago, before computers, it was a manual process. We had to go by this book manually every day to figure out a value. Now, this is pretty much loaded into the computer. It does it for us, for the most part. The biggest part of this book is, in between reappraisals, we're not allowed to adjust values. And when I say adjust values, I mean just randomly adjust values because something's so low or high or whatever. We can adjust values for physical damage, but that's it, not economic damages, economic consequences. So, this book keeps us on track during the four, eight-year cycle when we do a reappraisal. If something happened to myself and my staff three years from now, somebody could pick this book up, go to the computer, and do the same thing we were doing today, which is what it's meant to do. It's for equity, to keep us on track during that time period. So, this book has introduction, has all the statutes that govern what we're doing. Like I mentioned, has base rates, which the base rate is like your base cost for it. This is based on a cost approach. There's three different appraisals to valuation. There's cost, sales comparison, and income. All those three are in here. But the big base is the cost approach. You build it from the ground up, just like you would build a house. So that's what the information is in this book here. Again, land values also, there's ranges. There's not specific individual lot values in this book. Covers from A to Z what we're doing, our process. We hope that this is a first step in the process. We will ask for a public hearing at the next meeting. And again, then we'll ask for adoption in November of this book. And again, this is just our starting process for the revaluation. What I want to encourage everybody is, this is not, you're not getting your values now. You can't tell what your values are right now. This is just the beginning. When we get everything completed, we'll send everybody in the county new notices. It will have your new value on there. At that time, you can look at it. If you think it's high or something's wrong with it, then that's the time you can appeal that value or come to and talk to us about it. We'll talk to everybody we need to as far as that. What I would like to educate the public on now is what you can do ahead of time gearing up for that is, if you haven't recently purchased a property or sold a property or refinanced a property, educate yourself. You know, go online, go on Zillow sometimes, or if you've got neighbors that sold their house, check and see what it sold for, just to get an idea of what your house is worth. Because a lot of people, if you hadn't done one of those three things I mentioned, you have no idea what your house is worth, really. You know what it's insured for sometimes, but sometimes that's a misleading number, too. So, just go ahead between now and, I say, February, and just sort of be aware of sales in your area as far as what stuff they're selling for. And that's going to give you a base idea of what you can do. I do caution that when you're comparing sales, make sure you're comparing apples for apples. We have a lot of people that come in our office and compare their properties with their neighbors, and they say they're paying, you know, their base a lot less than theirs. Well, you've got 700 more square feet than they do, too. And you've got a detached garage worth $20,000 in the backyard, too. So you've got to make sure when you're comparing, you're comparing apples for apples. That's about it in a nutshell. This is, like I said, this is the beginning of our process. This, I will have a copy of this in, lifting Christie and Mr. Punticott's office for anybody who wants to take a look at it up here. We will have a copy in our office for the public to come in and view if they want to. They do have to remain in the building for now until we get it adopted. So I do ask that you keep it in the building, if you will. And I'll answer any questions you have.
Questions?
Mr. Chairman, am I understanding you to say that we're going to have a public hearing on adopting that manual there?
Yes, sir. Now, that is statutory.
And this is done every eight years?
Yes, sir.
Well, my question is this. How does a citizen out there in the county review that?
Except in our, it's opened up here in our office or in the county manager's office.
So we got two copies out?
Yeah, for now, yes, sir. Well, I got copies downstairs. We can't let them out of the building until it gets adopted. They have to come on site to look at this, look at this manual.
But we're going to have a public hearing at our next meeting to adopt it?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
We're setting the public here, and then the adoption won't be till November, will not be until November.
I just, I just found that a little bit odd, because you only have two copies of it. You know good and well, you can't have a hundred and...
I've got several copies in my office. I've got multiple copies. We can make more copies. It doesn't take long to make a copy.
Do you have that by chance in electronic form?
Not yet, and it's not available online yet. It will be, we're going to put it online.
When are we going to put it on?
Once it gets adopted. I understand what you're saying.
You see my concerns here. It looks like you'd put it online first so people could review it, if they wanted to.
Now, he knows we'll have to change it if this is not his first radio with us, Mr. Doherty. He knows we might change it.
I would say going forward, we need to put this online ahead of time so people can have access to it.
I will touch base, I'll touch base with the Department of Revenue just to make sure that is allowable at this point in time, because this is statutory stuff as far as these dates and times.
Because I think, to be transparent, you want to have it available as easily as possible for anybody to take it. You know, 120-some-odd thousand people are not going to come down here to look at that. But at least, but at least have it available online.
Sir, I'll definitely check into that, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Thank you, Alan.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, legislative goals. Oh, okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Now, we have a motion on the floor, any discussion? Do we need to set a time? At 9:00 AM?
It's advertised as October 16th at 9:15.
Add that to your motion.
I so add.
Okay. Motion on the floor, any discussion? If I was a favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Alan. Now, legislative goals.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you would like, I will be glad to read each and every legislative goal.
Callouts, Cliff Notes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be more than happy to make a motion that we approve the legislative goals as written.
I will give you the Cliff Note version of it. We're addressing agriculture.
But I do accept the motion.
We're accepting agriculture concerns. We're also continuing support for the military affairs and what they're trying to do. Continued support for Matthew and Florence recovery. We're also working on health and human services issues, especially when we've been asked to have that agreement with the state on matrices and requirements for the state and asking them to redo that. And then also, we do have in here K3 classroom sizes that are concerned and also asking for support for using lottery funds for Tier 2 counties. So that's the Cliff Notes.
All right. We have the motion on the floors. Any more discussion? If I was a favor, please raise your right hand. And your backup for your comments.
Again, I think the, since my comments earlier during the manager or the update on the hurricane, again, we appreciate the work of all of our staff. But I did want to just focus on a couple today because sometimes those get overlooked. And they really did just an outstanding, fabulous job. And again, you should be very proud. So, that's all I have.
All right. Let's hear it, I'll start with you, Mr. Malia.
Oh, okay, sorry. Well, I think we, in my case, I said my comments earlier about the performance of our county in O A S, D S S, Health Department, Fire Departments, Police Department, Sheriff Department, everybody concerned. It was, it was, it was, things came together as good as you could expect. And I hope we don't keep getting practice at it. That's what I'm praying for. Finally, I wanted to mention, I'd like to put in a word with the Commissioners and also the Board of Education. I wanted to say, in northern part of county, in the Fremont area on the classrooms, and I want to make this short, because we know what's at stake if those classrooms aren't built. We know, we know two things for sure. That any municipality, no matter who they are, there's two things that are imperative for economic growth, and that is a school and a library. Those two things are critical. And back in 2012, the library at Fremont, this Board of Commissioners kept that library open. And we really need to consider, and I ask the board's support here on this commission board, to less make sure that the northern part of county, especially Fremont, those classrooms are built, because they're already funded. It's three years in the making and nothing's taken place. So, that's all I have to say, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Rick Acop.
Good morning. Well, I've already, I guess, made enough comments about the appreciation of the employees and my appreciation overall for what I've seen happen. And so, I have had the opportunity to attend D S S and Board of Health. I did meet, I've had an opportunity to travel just a little bit during the, here can go around to a couple of the shelves. I met two ladies that played in the Board of Health. They were first-year employees. And those ladies were really happy to be working. And they were not, I don't know how to put this. They probably had had some previous work time other places. They were not 18 or 19, they were just a little bit older. But they were really happy to be employed with Wayne County. I was, their enthusiasm, and sometimes when you're out working special situations, that probably is a little, your adrenaline's flowing a little bit higher. But I just wanted to mention that I thought they were really happy to be Wayne County employees and looking at what I thought they saw as the long-term job security and the long-term down-the-road benefits of working in an organization where, you know, there will be retirement and stuff like that down the road. But that was, that was refreshing. A sonnet cut. That's it.
When I apologize, Commissioner Acop, for not wearing my shirt this morning, I got up and forgot all about it. So I got here and I said, oops. So I apologize. A very worthy cause, very. You know, the sheriff mentioned this earlier, and I think we need to take a long look at it. Everybody remembers when we had the 500-year flood. Only going to happen once in 500 years. Remember that? I think that was called Fran, wasn't it? Floated Fran or something. Well, then all of a sudden, it was just a few years later and we had Matthew. And my goodness, we have gotten really good at this because it happens every couple of years. I think it's a long time that we look at what's causing these floods and see what we can do about getting some flood prevention measures put in place to protect eastern North Carolina. I remember the mayor of Kinston in the last, or actually before Matthew, his comments were that it really is a problem that is prevalent in eastern North Carolina, especially in Neuse River, as well as the other rivers. And it seems like we're being overlooked, like, well, you're in the lowland, so therefore you're going to flood. Well, not necessarily. So, I would ask that we begin that process of finding out what we need to do. Do we need to put in additional dams and water retention lakes or whatever to prevent and control these floodwaters? If not, every couple of years, we're going to be devastated. So, I really think that it's time that we take a shot at that. And then if, a moment, if I could have with my...
Yes, I did. Yes, I did. I didn't know what you were doing.
I wanted to, I appreciate it, but I'm going to let my good commissioner here mention this. But before he mentions it, I just wanted to say, we see a lot of things politically on the national scene where the two parties cannot find common ground. In Wayne County, we can find common ground.
Go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Doherty. And before I do read this, I want to turn back and give some credit to Joe for bringing this up with me. And then we keep it on the agenda until we accomplish it. And I'll just stop right there for a moment. And this is a letter from the Wayne County Democratic Party. And this is dated October 1. Read the 1.4 cent sales tax increase. And it says, Dear Wayne County Commissioners, as Chairman of the Wayne County Democratic Party, I am pleased to see the 1.4 cent sales tax will be on the November 6 election ballot. This will be a good resource for the Board of Education to have funds for many improvements that are needed to be, needed for education for our students. I realize due to legislation, the sales tax cannot be earmarked on the ballot for education. However, soon it passes, I have listed below some suggestions for the use of the funds generated from this sales tax for discussion at the recent Candidates Forum, and of course geared towards education. And we know that we have, and like this, losing Joe investigating finally, we can't put a specific direction for the fund, but we have committed that we will use these funds for the promotion of education in Wayne County. So the public understands that we're just not out there looking for you to increase that for some broad indiscriminate use. Thank you for your time and attention to this much needed resource for education. I support the 1.4 cent sales tax increase and suggest that others also support this increase. Sincerely, signed by Barbara Dantonio, Chairman of the Wayne County Board of Education. What Joe's alluding to is that, yeah, there is, it looks like at the national level, there is always a war about who's going to support what, or whether they're going to work together to support anything. But I just want to say out loud to the citizens of Wayne County, I think this seven-member board makes a special effort to try to work together. We certainly do have differences. But when it gets right down where the rubber meets the road, I think we pretty much try to look at situations and work on them together. No one of us can do anything individually. And my good friend at the end of the road down there, John Bell, always reminds us that we operate as a board, not as individuals. And so this is one of those cases. And so this is one of those cases. And I want to thank my chairperson, Barbara Dantonio, for responding to my requests on behalf of this board that she put something in writing that would show that we're all in this together to try to put dollars in place that will support the funds and give us the funds that we all say we need to move this county forward. And so there's a lot of needs. Mayor Flowers was down talking about what the northern end needs and, and there are, she tells about growth patterns around the county that they're going to be need. So I have, and she made several copies, but I'm going to give Joe one right there and here's one off so that I hand them out to you guys. But that's one of each one of the county committees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bell.
Okay. I did attend the wages meeting. Matter of fact, I brought greetings from the county for the red rose tea and it went over real well. I found out one thing, that they did over seven-hundred thousand volunteer hours in volunteer work. If we, if the county had to pay for that, we would be talking about millions of dollars that we would have to pay, just at seven dollars and twenty-five cents per hour. So they saved the county a lot of money in what they do. The lunches that they serve on a daily basis, something that we would not be able to do. But they, they do good work over there and I think we should issue them a letter of appreciation somewhere along the line for that work that they do over there. And my Latino council meeting was canceled due to the storm. I did not get a chance to meet with them. I think my Juvenile Justice Meeting was also canceled unless the assistant county manager went to, I did not get a chance to go. But a lot of the meetings were canceled due to the hurricane notice. But like to give a little shout out to our county manager for, I kept up with it on my iPad until it broke. I don't know what happened to it, but that was good information to receive from, about the storm that was coming. Matter of fact, that when I wasn't scared, I went to the hospital Saturday before and I found out I had blood clot in my left leg, so they put me on lockdown. I couldn't get out. So I was hoping I wouldn't have to go anywhere because I was afraid to walk. But anyway, my, one other thing, my last living uncle passed during the hurricane thing and he was ninety-six years old, World War II veteran. They had to postpone that because of the fact that the hurricane was coming, so I don't have another uncle living. So I imagine I fit the mode of a lot of other people, you know, to have these older people that pass on. But anyway, I thank all of you for your response to that and keep up the good work. I think the county commissioners doing a good job. Thank Ed for the letter from the, the other party.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. While we're talking about, I want to thank Commissioner Camardi and Commissioner Darby for working that out because it does show that we've got common ground for Wayne County. And but I want to make it perfectly clear now, y'all have heard that before, perfectly clear. This is for public education. This is for the public school system and also for Wayne Community College. So, you know, this is for public education. Just clarify that with everybody. All right. Also, I had the pleasure going down to Seven Springs, the day that the governor, one of the days that the governor was in town. You know, I really don't know what his office can do, you know, his, everything's tied on what the federal government does, but they had a good turnout for him to visit. A lot of the farmers had the opportunity to talk to him, a lot of the business owners, the residents of Seven Springs. And even though they didn't have, I think they said they had about eighteen inches of water this time in the fire station, they had something like three foot during Matthew. And that really doesn't matter. I mean, you know, eighteen inches of water did just as much damage as three foot. But they're, they're trying to rebound. The good thing is they do have a new fire station that's under construction and they won't be worried about, the fire station won't be worried about flooding anymore. And, you know, EMS station got flooded out during Matthew and I understand that construction groundwork has already begun on the new EMS station for Seven Springs. But they had a good turnout that day. Also, this past Sunday night, I had the pleasure of going to the Maxwell Center. You know, and our selling point for the Maxwell Center is Max Out the Max. This was a joint venture between a lot of the churches in Wayne County, different denominations, different races. It didn't make any difference. They had a youth rally and it was, it was amazing, the turnout. And like I say, all, you know, all kinds of denominations were involved, different races involved. And this is a youth rally and this is, this is all about the kids, you know, and we, we all know we've got a problem in Wayne County and we've got a problem in this whole country. And to reach out to, to the young people, they had a dynamic speaker. He's a, he's a gentleman from Florida that was raised in a foster home. He's a minority, but one of the most dynamic speakers that I have ever heard. And I think he reached a lot of lives Sunday night. And when I say we maxed out the max, I think we planned for that Maxwell Center to seat something like fourteen hundred theater style, where they had to run and grab chairs because they estimate it was between, or close to eleven hundred young people and parents at the Maxwell Center Sunday night. And they're having another youth rally in March of 2019 and the goal is to have them standing in the halls. I mean, it was, it was quite a turnout and this is positive for Wayne County. I look at this the same as what y'all just did. This is, you know, this is everybody involved and that's what we need. But so proud of the staff at the Maxwell Center, did an outstanding job. When the chairs run out, they jump right on it. When the trash cans filled up, they jump right on it. The staff at the Maxwell Center did an outstanding job, you know. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Acoch. Before I do mine, I think you have a final comment you wanted to make.
I forgot to mention the fact that I will not be here at our next meeting before I was notified that I'd have to be out of town. So I hate to miss these meetings, but I'm going to miss the next one. Thank you.
You're in a Joyce's direction.
Joyce's direction, actually.
Yeah, Mr. Wood.
I wanted to just follow up just a second on the flooding that Commissioner Darby brought up. My understanding is from, from the state, right down to the counties, from Raleigh all the way to the coast, and I've been told this by a lot of state people that know this territory all the way to the coast. First of all, the stream, the stream cleanout that we're doing is good, but it's not going to solve our flooding problems because most of these streams go into the, either the Neuse River or the Little River, a lot of them. And everybody agrees from the state all the way to the coast, that the Neuse River and the Little River needs to be dredged. It's not running its full capacity as a river and that falls under the Army Corps of Engineers. Commissioner Darby, what we need to do is to get somebody to start putting some pressure on the Army Corps of Engineers to start this dredging process because what I've been told by the state is that if we were to dredge those two, whenever we have a flood, it would be very minimal here in Goldsboro. And whenever released from Falls of the Lake Dam up in Raleigh, we would be affected. And look, the key is a lot of the flooding out from Kinston in that area is actually coming from the release of the dam a lot of times. We really need to concentrate on getting these two rivers dredged because what we're doing now as far as the stream cleanout, yeah, it's going to help, but where's the water going to go? It's going to stop because the Neuse River and Little River can't handle it. So.
Bring that up, thank you. I was going to make the very same comments that is Corps of Engineers that takes care of that. And if you saw, some of us were a part of a text reading that's coming from John Bell, I believe, by he and Senator Tillis were asking the Corps of Engineers to release the water before the storm got here.
Right.
And they ignored them.
Yeah.
I mean, you can't even get your U.S. Senator and your Jolly Leader, they wouldn't listen to them. I mean, that's pretty bad. I mean, they...
Mr. Chairman, the good thing is though, they are releasing water out of Falls Lake now. They did not release any water during the storm.
No, they didn't.
They did not, so that was a plus. But while we're talking about this, I can remember as a child hearing my, my father and my uncles talk about when they used to do exactly what you were saying, Mr. Mayor. I mean, they dredged Nahana Swamp one time. They've got pictures of an old steam shovel dredging something as small as Nahana Swamp. And I think that's part of the problem is that we've got the same rivers that's always been here. We've got more, less land for, to soak up the water because of asphalt and tin roofs and concrete. But there's, some, something needs to be at least looked at. But, and also keep in mind now, Neuse River and Little River are the two primary rivers in Wayne County. But northern Wayne County is in the Tar River Basin. I just mentioned Nahana Swamp. Nahana Swamp is in the Contentment Creek. Contentment Creek goes into the Tar River. So we've, you know, luckily, we're on the, on the top end of that water basin. And I think that's one reason we probably see less flooding in the northern end because, you know, that's, that's the headwaters of that side. But, but you're right. I mean, I can, I can, I can remember, like I say, my uncles and my dad talking about, they used to go watch them when they were dredging the rivers and the creeks.
Mr. Chairman, I want to take a moment though to address what I perceive as, as the more frequency of these big storms, slightly different perspective. My understanding, when they measured the temperature in the ocean, this time with Florence coming, the ocean water was about eight degrees warmer than they normally would be. Now, I know, I respect all the things y'all say we could probably do maybe to alleviate some flood problems right in these rivers. But the larger issue is global warming and we're not just suffering. See, this is, what happens on the east coast is our hurricanes. Someplace else is something else. The tsunamis in Indonesia, the solar, the ice cap is melting and destroying the habitat for the solar bears. So we're not just talking about how this whole weather thing and all that's affecting eastern North Carolina. We are endangering the entire ecological environment based upon this whole business of global warming. And I don't want to make this a highly political position, but the current administration and some folk who are traditionally in the other party do not believe there's anything called global warming or for the benefit of big business, somebody's claiming that it's not. So I just want us to make sure that we look at the big picture because I believe we are letting things happen that we need to be aware of, that we're destroying the balance of the, we don't want to destroy earth. We don't want to imbalance earth by closing our eyes to what is happening in a much larger thing.
Okay, finish. I was at the college Thursday night. I was invited to be part of their strategic planning and Craig was there. At first, you know, Thursday night, I didn't really want to go and it turned out, but had a good time and some great ideas came out. But the point I wanted to make is the corset sales tax is not just for public schools, it's for the colleges. And I can assure you, those employees out there reminded me of that as well while I was there. And of course, I sold it like a used car salesman, but, you know. But they were all, they were all for to understand the purpose of it. So I'm just going to let you know that we do have two places we do have to fund and they're doing a great job out there. Hospital has gone live with their new software system, Epic. And like within a new software system, there are bumps in the road, but it's been pretty successful and, and that's a really good thing because it was very expensive, by the way. And but they did have some issues with their cooling towers going out and they don't say it's related to Epic, but it was an IT issue, so the folks from USC hurriedly came down and to correct that problem. We're almost at the point where we will have to evacuate patients into OES and the sheriffs were ready and on go to do that, but that didn't happen, thank God. Mayor Flowers talked about a one billion dollars for cleanup. Does that, is he referring to the contract that we've had in the past where he puts stuff on the side of the road and it gets picked up?
We have money also to set aside for mosquito control and we're in the process of trying to bid that out.
Are we at the point now that the public can take their debris and put it on the side of the road?
Yes. Yes, the state, to my knowledge, is picking that up now, yes, sir.
Okay. I just don't know that it's been made public.
That's on vegetative matter, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's vegetative, right? Not the, the C and D, not the...
No, these are limbs and that kind of stuff. But you got to take it up to the side of the road to get it hauled off. I didn't have it. I mean, I was, I was so fortunate, I never even lost power. That's why I was making fun of him. He was at the beach sweating, sweating hard and talking to him. I said, man, it's cool at my house. But I was very, very lucky because, you know, a mile away from my house, they didn't have power. Just got lucky. But anyhow, just wanted to let y'all know what was going on at the hospital. That's everything.
I did want to mention one thing. I did not want to forget the Health Department and the work they did in the shelters as well. We also had some paramedics at the shelter as well. So, so if I've forgotten anybody, please, we will make sure we recognize everybody, but I did want to mention...
My letter of thanks that we sent out was with a raw brush and I'm not going to lie, she wrote it, but I told her not to change a word of it because she did an excellent job writing it.
I think you did.
I am. I'm not going to mess with perfection. It was a well-written letter, so, you know. So I appreciate Carol doing that. She did it very quickly and she was about to go off to go to her daughter's wedding and she's about to have crazy at that time anyway, so. Yes, sir.
Most people know, but if not, the ones that don't, the shelters in Wayne County for this storm, the county ran them. We did not have an outside source running the shelters and I think that was one of the reasons everything ran as smooth as it did is because our local people were making decisions, putting people on the ground where they needed to be, putting supplies where they needed to be and not having to wait three or four days for somebody in Timbuktu to make a decision. I mean, Tammy, I mean, she made decisions, she may have made a wrong decision, but if she did, I didn't see it. I mean, it was, I think that was the key in this operation running as smooth as it did was our local people. They know what to do, they know their job. Just leave them alone, let them do their job that we're paying them for and things will be all right because it runs, I mean, it was amazing how smooth things ran. And before, you know, you'd ask for something, well, we got, take three days to get answer. Well, by then, you didn't need what you'd asked for.
If I could say just one more quick thing about the shelters and we also really do have to thank our, our school system. They did an incredible job. The first night the shelters were open, we broke into the refrigerators to make sure that we had food. And, and I appreciate Dr. Dunsmore, Doc Mike said, whatever you need, get. And so it really worked out well. So we really, a huge thank to the, to the school system and their flexibility, especially when we had to open up the two additional shelters at Mount Olive Middle and also at Spring Creek Middle. So they were fabulous to work with.
Real quick, I think there's always lessons to be learned, but I just thought of the fact that the only thing that I'm aware of is that we can learn from this, is that there were some issues with food getting to the people at the sh... were some issues with, uh, food getting to the people at the shelters on time. Sometimes it was four or five hours. So we may want to revisit that and take a look at it. Where are we getting our food? I know we had a lot of people that, uh, were donating. But I believe that if any church, no matter who they are, or Baptist men or anybody else, or Methodist men, want to come out and, and bring a, a, a truck, a trailer and provide, provide meals, I think we should utilize them, just like we did, uh, with, with the church we're talking about. I'm not saying that, that we didn't use them. What I'm saying is, we may can learn something from the food side of it from this experience.
Well, and, and we were coordinating with the Salvation Army and, uh, for, for all food. I, I think there are some specific issues, but, but, but the first night, yes, sir, we, we understand your concern.
I understand. Okay.
All right. I know we need to go back and return into closed sessions. Is it for the same reason?
Us to sort of the performance of, uh, public employees.
Cause there are a motion on the floor to go in closed session. Okay, motion on the floor. Please, right, anywhere in it.